Yep, tonight we're gonna pick up in verse 16. Hopefully, hopefully we'll get through the 666, Mark of the Beast talk, and get into 14, which will be much more, much more positive, right? Much happier imagery, well, for part of it. We'll get there. All right, well, let's start with a word of prayer. And then we will read this section again. And I want to jump right into some of my favorite scholars. So, all right, let's pray. Lord God, thank you for another time to come together to study your word. Father, we, humbled by the call that you've placed on our lives, the invitation of salvation, and that you have worked in us to such a degree that we would spend time out of busy lives to give attention to your word in the hope and trust and faith that you would continue to change us. And that is what we invite tonight, that you would change us, that your spirit would work in us and through us, throughout us, that we would conform more to the image of Christ, that our minds and hearts would be renewed in such a way that we would begin to see the difference between the systems that you've created and the systems of the world as we've talked about it through this chapter. That you would open our eyes to see these things around us as we engage, whether it be in media, social media, or TVs, newspapers, anything, even in conversations, daily commerce, like whatever it is, that Father, you would help us to see things as you see them. Lord, we pray. We pray for your blessing on the study of your word tonight, that we would live differently, that we would share your good news with all of those around us, and that more and more would be added to your kingdom. Lord, we love you and we thank you. And we pray everything in Jesus's name. Amen. All right. So, reading here, starting, starting at verse 11, just to read through to the end of the chapter. This is Revelation 13. "Then I saw another beast coming up out of the earth, and he had two horns like a lamb, and he spoke as a dragon. He exercises all the authority of the first beast in his presence; and he makes the earth and those who dwell in it to worship the first beast, whose fatal wound was healed. He performs great signs, so that he even makes fire come down out of heaven to the earth and the presence of men; and he deceives those who dwell on the earth because of the signs which it was given him to perform in the presence of the beast, telling those who dwell on the earth to make an image to the beast, who had the wound of the sword and has come to life. And it was given to him to give breath to the image of the beast, so that the image of the beast would even speak and cause as many as do not worship the image of the beast to be killed. And he causes all the small, and the great, and the rich, and the poor, and the free men, and the slaves, to be given a mark on their right hand or on their forehead; and he provides that no one will be able to buy or to sell except the one who has the mark, either the name of the beast or the number of his name." Here is wisdom. "Let him who has understanding calculate the number of the beast; for the number is that of a man, and his number is six hundred and sixty-six." All right, so just by way of review, wanted to write this up here. So we have the imagery that comes through the chapter, the system that it relates to, as well as, remember, this is a both and scenario, with the person and, I was really lost for words, because it's not always a person per se, but how does this embody? Right? So what is the, like, physical incarnation of it? So we start with the dragon. The dragon represents the world system, but in the person, also in the person of Satan. Then we're introduced to the sea beast, system, Rome, or the Roman Empire. And this is in regard, so remember, contextually, in the time that John is writing. So please, do not confuse, like, what I'm presenting here with a historicist, like, perspective on eschatology or revelation. That basically, like, a historical perspective, a historicist or preterist perspective would actually see all this as all having been fulfilled pre or up to 70 AD, and that's it. That's not what we're talking about here. It's kind of a both and, right? That this is something that spoke in John's time and for 2,000 years since. And that is the living word of God. That is why, at its newest point, we read a book that is 2,000 years old. Right? And it still speaks into our lives. The Lord speaks to us through it. So in that same regard, prophetically and typologically, as John is writing this and the imagery that he sees, he is seeing Rome, the system of Rome, the empire, and it is represented and embodied by the emperor himself. Does that make sense? And even just kind of in sorting out the perspectives on revelation from what we're talking about? Okay, so the earth beast, the system that this earth beast, remember, this is also seen as the false prophet, is the imperial cult. That is the system of the imperial cult, and it can be embodied by the priest. Now, you could possibly replace the priest here with, like, another leader, but whoever is conducting and directing the worship towards the sea beast. So, I always get that grin on my face, I'm like, hmm, what's a relevant, like, you know, what's a historic? And this is, this is the point I get in trouble, right? Okay, so, Mao's China. All right. Right during the revolution, who was the head of propaganda? Right? And it's lost for me for, like, Nazi Germany. Oh boy, there was a propaganda guy, and he, like, he was it, and I mean, that was... Come on, Google. I'm just kidding. But anyways, so, so, but I think that's an example. Like, that is, in my mind, that is what would translate. Because you think about the level of propaganda and the poisoning of people's minds to adopt this greater system. You know, even to the point of killing their neighbors because they looked different, or because they had a different ethnicity. Gables? Yeah, yep. There you go.
Can you say it again?
I think it's Gables.
G-O-B-B-E-L, or sorry, B-B-E-L-S.
It's pronounced Gerbils.
Gerbils? Okay. Okay, Gerbils. Not gerbils.
I'm trying to just get you to say it for recording. Joseph Gerbils?
Yeah, Joseph Gerbils. There you go. Oh, that's right. So, anyway, that's, in my mind, like, I think that almost appears to be a one-to-one, right? Because it's also within that propaganda machine that, like, all of a sudden, like, you almost have this deification of Hitler. Or, you know, take North Korea. I mean, forgot for the revolution there. Anyways, but he was actually deified, so that's a whole thing. Actually, I bet North Korea could really, like, fit into a lot of this pretty nicely. So now, what we're talking about is the mark. The mark. And this is what, you know, when we zoom in here, "And he causes all, the small, and the great, and the rich, and the poor, and the free men, and slaves." So this is all of society to be given a mark on their right hand or on their forehead. And so we've already talked about the comparisons with Deuteronomy 6, with the mark on the hand and on the forehead as a reminder, right? You shall write these things in regards to God's commands. And verse 17 here, "And he provides that no one will be able to buy or sell except the one who has the mark, either the name of the beast or the number of his name." So this is either the name or number. So we had talked at length last time, actually, the last couple of weeks of, you know, really just the full spectrum of interpretation for that. That that mark could have been, in some periods, it was actually like a tattoo mark, or even scarification that signified your loyalty to the empire, that this person had burned incense or had paid for that access to engage in commerce, had offered a sacrifice to a certain deity or to the emperor himself. This mark also could have been a seal, a stamp, with, on a written document, showing that that person had offered that sacrifice, burned incense to, so on and so forth. And so, so this isn't necessarily just a, you know, literally on the hand or on the forehead. Once again, that goes back to Deuteronomy 6, that this is something that you think and meditate upon or give that mental assent to, and it's your actions. So we have that spiritual principle to it, but then also the manifestation, how does that physically play out? So, that is just review. And so what I'm hoping to pick up with tonight is the name or the number. Right. Yeah, so, so in bringing up the Holocaust and the numbers that were received on, you know, Jewish people that were taken into the camps, would that have been seen as, like, the mark of the beast? And remember, the whole point of the mark is to be able to engage in commerce. Like, it's to continue to be a part of the system. They were given a number because they were being removed from the system. So that is kind of how I would separate those things. No, because this is, and that whole idea, and he causes all, right? That's not necessarily a force as in, like, you know, holding you down to make that happen. No, he's created a system in such a way that if you want to survive, if you want to continue to be a part of society, you have to do this. Yeah. Yeah, so, so there's an idea here that you could be in the empire, but completely removed from this. That just makes you a target. Right? And that's really what we see in the early church, is that they become targets because they refuse to participate in this. That's exactly what John is writing to these churches too. Remember, John knew these churches. You could see him as the elder or apostle over, like, these churches. And so he is talking to them, he knows the situations, the cultures within each city. Some are more affluent than others. Some have experienced more persecution than others. Some had more Gentiles that grew up in a system, but now in committing to Christ. Maybe some of them were trying to have a foot in both worlds. Maybe some of them had stepped out of that system and had already suffered many of the consequences, rejection by family and by peers, and maybe they were no longer a part of the trade guild because those trade guilds were devoted to a certain God. So, you know, at what point are they participating in underground commerce or black market? The system has happened before, and we're using Rome as the example. And what I would contend is that this has been happening for 2,000 years.
Okay, so it's ongoing.
Ongoing, much like a lot of the other things that we have read in Revelation. Like, think of the four horsemen. And so what we have here is an ongoing testimony in the vision that God gave to John, and John faithfully recording and passing to believers, that if the Lord should tarry, and he has for 2,000 years, be aware. Be aware of the ties that you have to society, government, culture, all of those things. Will there be a final one? Yes. Yeah, absolutely. The question is, so will there be a final one? Could there be different ones in different areas? Could North Koreans be still dealing with their situation? Could we be dealing with a situation here? And then maybe there's an empire that extends around Israel? Yeah, easily. And the word of God would still be true. Now, could there also be, like, one world government and, you know? Yeah, it could be that too. So, but if you're already sensitive to this in a regional context, you would already be awares when you see it in a global context. Does that make sense? And I think in that, that is the discipleship moment. And let me also just say here, like, this is, this does not mean, ooh, gotta be Amish. That's not what this, that's not what this means. Because remember, even within the Babylonian empire, you had Daniel, who was called to service, Daniel and his friends. Mordecai, Esther, and the Persian empire. You have plenty, I mean, you know, even to the point of Nehemiah. Nehemiah was a cupbearer. So all of these things are, like, important, but it's a matter of sorting those things out of where is the line? Oh, that's what I was saying about, like, Mao's China, North Korea, Nazi Germany, like, different things like that. We'll get to that. We'll get to that. Yep, yes. So, now, as far as all the numbers that we have today, I am not gonna tell you that all of those numbers or any of those numbers are the mark of the beast. But I also want to challenge all of us is, at what point would any of those numbers, if you were basically, like, forced to choose, you can keep all of those numbers and all the benefits that go along with it? We'll throw in a 401K in there as well.
And an IP address.
An IP address, is all, yeah, all of it, right? Like, all of that, to keep that, all you have to do is burn this incense and declare our president to be the one true God. So, like, and that's what we're talking about. That's what's comparable here for continuing to be a part of the imperial cult, to continue to be a part of a trade cult. Like, that was, like, that was your livelihood. Like, the moment you refuse that, you're, you're cutting up your credit card, you're cutting up your social security, you're cutting up, like, all of it. You're burning it, and you're just like, oh, I'm on my own. Or you're relying on Christian brethren, the church, to take care of you for a time to, like, help in that adjustment. That was the reliance upon the church because people were being, like, really, like, kicked out of society by pledging their allegiance to Jesus Christ. Jesus is Lord, Caesar is not. At worst, you're being presented as an enemy of the state. So not just a passive, like, I'm not gonna participate anymore, but, you know, you do you, and I'll do me over here. At worst, an enemy of the state, which happens in Nero's time because, oh, the Christians are burned in Rome. Oh, but they're different anyways, like, that's who we get to pick on. So, so yeah, as far as, like, participation in society, so for all of those numbers, imagine those in the balance of your allegiance to God. So, and I'm not saying, cut him, burn him, you know, anything like that, I'm not saying that at all. I'm just saying, if that's the choices, like, every Christian should be prepared to walk away from those. And if you can't, that's the soul searching. So we're not even talking about, like, give up 10% of your income, everybody needs a tie, you know, we're not talking about that. We're talking walking away from everything. Everything that you have worked for to build, if that was put in the balance as the authority that continues to control that, the institutions. Right? Sure. So, two things. One, I think we already sleepwalked into it. Any level of government reliance, any level of, you know, just, like, within the systems itself, like, that is the frog in the boiling pot. The water's just not boiling yet. We're just enjoying a good swim, the water's nice, but at what point does that get turned up? And maybe it won't, maybe it won't in our lifetime. But that's the point of discipleship, where are we speaking to the next generation of, hey, for every tie that you have to the world, don't ever let it come between you and the Lord. Do we raise them that way? Do we raise our kids and grandkids in a way that, like, we look at every tie to the world as something that should be walked away from if it was ever demanded of us to choose between the world and God? And I think as Christians, I mean, I think that's, I think that's what we need to do, to recognize the potential for how much control it can have over us. And you know, if, if some of you are at retirement age, what if your retirement was in the balance? What would you do? Where's that line of compromise to retain that, knowing how much you have put into that, how much you've worked for all your life, leading up to this moment? And so, so it's those things that we really need to think about just to have our hearts prepared, our minds prepared, our spirit prepared, if it were to come to that. Now, could it actually be, like, the number or, you know, so for Shadrach, Meshach, and Abednego, right? Hennaniah, Azariah, and Meshiel, and they're proper names. And for them, like, it wasn't necessarily, like, it wasn't, it wasn't like the frog in the, in the pot, right? Like, they're a part of an empire. They're already a conquered people that have been taken into exile, and they are at the whim of an emperor. Whether we like it or not, we are at the whim of institutions and people in power. We can talk about democracy or the constitutional republic and things like that, but it happens here. And, yeah, just somebody decides to set up a golden image and says, this is, I mean, I think they would get laughed at because we still have some of the freedom and liberty to do it, and there's not a precedent for it. But all it takes is a generation. Case in point, North Korea. I mean, they literally worship a guy and his dad, and there's images set up of him. Pictures. And every house is supposed to have one, and they can be arrested and thrown into prison or disappeared unalived for having dust on the picture. I mean, you know, so, so like, it just takes a generation, a generation that forgets how Christians are to be in the world, our relationship with the world, in the world, not of the world. And so, for Daniel's three friends, I mean, they were already conquered, they had already been kind of moving into inner circles of government, right? Maybe not being in power, but having a certain level of influence. But with that comes spotlight. For any position, for any politician, for anybody like that, there's a special spotlight on them and how they conduct themselves. And if they are known to be a Christ follower, oh man. That just kind of raises the bar even more. And how easy would it have been? I mean, here's where we can, you know, put in a little bit of a joke or tongue-in-cheek and say, oh yeah, what about the other friends? Oh, you're not hearing about them because they actually worship the image. There were probably some that did that. You know, we assume that it was just those four guys, Daniel and his three friends, that stayed faithful, but wait, what if there was 10 or more? But yet, at certain intervals, like, you know, here they failed, here, you know, and I'm like, we're not hearing about them. And so that's the call for each and every one of us to stay faithful to Christ, to stay faithful to Yahweh, to God, and His system, His kingdom. So in a more recent example, we have COVID, and if we want to talk about a combination of government and social or peer pressure, and mind you, not making a judgment call, but look at the way that took place throughout society, how transformative that was almost overnight. Once again, I'm not making a judgment call on right or wrong here, but I'm saying, look at how transformative that was for our entire world. Okay, so what if there was something more sinister? What if, and I mean, you know, we were pretty close, you actually had to have a vaccine to, to be out in public. I mean, cards to travel with and different things like that, it was pretty close. And I'm not saying vaccine was the mark, I'm not saying that at all, but just as an example of, you know, you want to talk about, like, oh, you know, this was signed or stamped or, you know, something like that. And so, and mind you, I, last, a couple of weeks ago, we had talked about, like, legal tender, things like that is an example of the mark, right? It's having the image of the leader, of a president, of an emperor. Everybody remember that part of the conversation? Okay, so I just want to say, like, if we're talking about money, and, you know, I don't know if anybody carries cash anymore, but, you know, like, there's a full spectrum here that we're talking about, so I'm not, you know, talking about vaccines or anything like that, so. But it's just helpful for us to understand what would this look like today. COVID was a pretty good one. That's a pretty good example. So, yeah. So, okay, all right. So are any other questions that might haunt you? If you don't ask them now? Yes. That's great. So remember, the mark has primarily to do with commerce. How do you get the mark? By giving some level of assent or allegiance, allegiance, I think is a better word, to the cult, but ultimately it's to the emperor, and that's why it goes back to the name or the number of the beast. So it's not the name or the number of the earth beast, but of the sea beast.
Are you going to get into the thing?
Oh, yeah. Yep, yep, yep. I'll even, even to, I'll, I'll do one better there, the 616. So, all right. 616, that's right. So.
You do an Eric code 616.
Well, and that's where, so I, I hope, you know, as we're talking about this, as I'm trying to, like, kind of give those examples of how this would translate for us today, or in kind of a regional idea, or if you want to say, in the American empire. Right? Like, it's not to be dogmatic. It's not to be like, oh, I need to get rid of all my credit cards, or, oh, I need to, you know, get rid of social security or anything like that. That's not necessarily what I'm saying. Right? Because, like, those things very well not be the mark. Because, you know, what's the qualifiers? The name or the number of the beast. And so, you know, so, so we need to, you know, really unpack that. That's what we're about to, yes. Yeah, and I mean, so, but, but once again, we got to be careful with it, because if you're looking for a hill to die on, there's plenty of them. You just got to pick one, or all of them, right? And, you know, and so we got to be careful and, you know, have our eyes wide open, praying in the spirit, right, asking the Lord for discernment in this day and age in which we live, with technology advancing so quickly. I mean, for all of these things. So now, the name and the number. So I want to read from Schnabel here. So, "The number 666 that John gives in the last comment has been interpreted in essentially two ways. The number indicates the name of the person who is the beast, or the number indicates in a symbolic manner the character of the beast. The identification of the name of a person with a number was possible in antiquity, because numbers were represented by letters of the Hebrew, Greek, or Latin alphabet." Now, does everybody have this handout? Oh, we got some right here. There you go. Anybody else? Big camera shot. I just realized. Thank you, Brenda. Oh, I got one. Yeah, thanks. I did. Okay, so what you have there in front of you, you have the Hebrew gamatrya, and then Greek below that, then on the other side. Well, mine's special, so. No, no, it's all right, but that, that'll be enough to, to work from. So, let's see here. "The identification of the name of a person with a number was possible in antiquity, because numbers were represented by letters of the Hebrew, Greek, or Latin alphabet. The representation of a personal name as a number is generally called gamatrya, a Hebrew loan word from Greek, giometria." So this is the Hebrew loan word version of it here. It's generally what it's referred to as. So the relevant Greek term is isopsephos. Isopsephos. Equal in numerical value. This practice was very common. Okay, so in antiquity, this was very common. This was not a unique thing, not unique to scripture, like, John is pulling this from his culture. Or in the vision that he saw, or perceived, this was God speaking His language, like, within John's culture. So however you want to see that. "Worshippers of pagan gods sometimes referred to the God by using the numerical value of his or her name." So that's how common it was. For example, Jupiter was known as 717. "In difficult and dangerous political settings, people wrote their opinions about an emperor encoded in numbers on walls, afraid to speak their mind openly. Suetonius relates several such graffiti in Greek and in Latin. One reads as follows: 'A calculation knew; Nero, his mother slew.' The first word in this sentence, translated as a calculation knew, based on the verb sophiso, count, count with pebbles, signals to the reader to detect the fact that the numerical value of the name Nero, or in Greek neron, which is 1,005, is the same number as the numerical value of the following sentence. In other words, this graffiti, the graffito affirmed that the rumor was correct, that Nero indeed killed his mother Agrippina." So the whole sentence, like, in its numerical value, was the equivalent of Nero's name. So, in Pompeii, the city that was destroyed in AD 79 as a result of the eruption of Mount Vesuvius, the following graffito was discovered on a wall. "I love her whose number is 545." "The man responsible for this graffito evidently had an affair with a married woman, for which, had it become public, he would have been punished. But he still wanted to publicly confess his affection and assume that his lover would understand that it was her name written on the wall. Since the numerical riddle could encode the first name, the family name, the nickname, or a combination of these, all resulting in different numbers, the woman would have to know that 545 was her number. No one in the city would be able to identify from the number 545, the person whose number was written on the wall. Many names yielded the numerical value of 545, or 545. Even names that did not have a value of 545 could be written in such a manner that the number 545 would emerge, since the orthography of names was not fixed." So basically, as culture, like, like slang terms, how quickly those spread, right? Think of it as, like, certain leaders, like, their numbers becoming known. Or within the temple cult, or occult of Jupiter, they just knew to refer to Jupiter as 717. Does that make sense? It's, it's really different from our own culture, but just to know that that was a thing back then. That's funny. "So in Jewish exegesis, gamatrya was known as an exegetical tool formulated at the 29th of the 32 hermeneutical rules. One rabbinic tradition regarding the name of the Messiah asserted that his name would be Menahim, the Comforter, from Lamentations, chapter 1, verse 16. In the argument for this, in the argument for this assertion, the rabbis pointed out that the name Menahim, written with the four Hebrew letters, mem, nun, ket, mim, has the same numerical value, which is 138, as the word branch, the three Hebrew letters, sad, mim, ket, which is given in Zechariah, chapter 3, verse 8, everybody's still following, and Zechariah, chapter 6, verse 12, as the title of the Davidic Messiah." If you're starting to feel like, well, you could just make this say anything you want, you're on to something. "In another example from the Jewish and Christian Sibylline oracles, the authors included a prophecy about world leaders from Alexander the Great to Hadrian, including 11 emperors from Julius Caesar to Vespasian, for which no names, but only the numerical value of the first letter of their name is given. So a majority of interpreters understand John's statement in Revelation 13:18 as a numerical riddle that can be solved with gamatrya. This means that one needs to find a name or a word that consists of letters whose numerical value is 666. Such attempts will yield different results, depending on which alphabet one uses. Since John and many of the Christians in the province of Asia were Jewish Christians who spoke Aramaic and read the Hebrew scriptures, the basis for gamatrya could be the Hebrew alphabet. Since John writes in Greek, and since all the Christians in Asia Minor spoke Greek, the number riddle could likewise be based on the Greek alphabet." The following table, so there's a table here that lists suggested identifications of the number 666, derived from the numerical value of the letters of the Greek alphabet. So, Eunthus, the one who blossoms beautifully, the god Dionysius. Latinus, or the Latins, Roman emperor, empire, this is from Irenaeus. So these are their, like, these are actual historical interpretations of, like, what 666 could be. Oh, okay, here's, here's one you'll enjoy, also from Irenaeus. He felt that, so Titans, the Greek word for Titans, also is the equivalent of 666. So some of you might geek out on that one. So the Titans are the ones that rebelled against the gods, and also in this mix is, you know, Rome was in John's time, but what's the original world empire? Babylon. Or if you go back even further, what else happened in Babylon? Oh, yeah, the Tower of Babel, and who was a famous ruler? Nimrod. Nimrod, in certain traditions or circles, was thought to be a Titan or a Nephilim. So, interesting connection, gets a little weird and wonky there, but, yeah. So there are also links to Titus, the Flavian emperors, emperors, Emperor Gaius Caligula. So Gaius Caesar is also equals 666. Akai, Domet, Sebge. So Autocrater, Caesar, Domitian, Sebastian, Germanicus. So that's another 666. So it just, like, literally, so it's this table, and this table, and this one. So now, if you wanted to use the Latin alphabet, so that's all just Greek. So if you want to use Latin, so Diocles Augustus, Julian, Apostata, Vicarus, Philidae, so, which Seventh-day Adventist attributed that one, that is the title of the Pope. So there you go, that's one from church history. And then, ironically enough, the Seventh-day Adventist prophetess Ellen Gold, her name, actually, if you were to Latinize it, would be 666. So we don't have evidence of all of these names, except if you were to take, you know, once again, in that spectrum from money, or a certain symbol for that name being utilized. So now, how much of that do we have evidence, like, historically? So in Hebrew, Nero Caesar equates to 666. What's also, so the beast in Hebrew also equates that. Caesar, or emperor of Rome, also equates to 666 in Hebrew. So once again, like, whereas Greek, there was a whole lot of options, Latin, less so, what's interesting is that in Hebrew, you have a shorter list, and all of those kind of pointing in the same direction. Do you want me to say the Hebrew ones again? So Nero Caesar, or Emperor Nero, 666. The beast, 666, and Caesar, or emperor of Rome, equates to 666 as well. What a coincidence. Also, here's the part, so, like I said before, 616 as a number of the beast, as a mark of the beast. There was a manuscript discovered, manuscript 115, and it had a variation. It did not say 666, it said 616. Irenaeus actually refers to this, but he also kind of discounts it. What's fascinating about this is in Latin, in Latin, Nero Kaiser, or Emperor Nero, fits 616 in Latin. So whether somebody had understood Emperor Nero in Hebrew, and then as they were translating, or just come to understand that number, remember, being synonymous with that name, in maybe writing Latin, they transferred that to 616. So what seems to be a variation might actually indirectly point back to the common knowledge of Nero being the 666. Why is verse 18 a part of all of this? Why is this riddle a part of Scripture, a part of the Revelation, right? And I think it's everything that we have been talking about, it's really nailing it down. Because we can talk about the imagery, we can talk about kingdoms and different things like that. But it's at this point, think of it almost as like a funnel. And boom. Here, like undeniably, and you know, and this will actually get unpacked a little bit more in chapter 17. But here in verse 18, it goes to like one person. And John is saying something that everybody around there would have known. So in case you were wondering, oh, is this really, you know, if we were, if somebody were to read it and be like, oh, okay, so I need to be on the lookout for a dragon, and I need to be on the lookout for some kind of beast. Scott McKnight translates it as a wild thing. A wild thing coming out of the ocean, or a wild thing coming out of the earth, maybe out of a cave, right? But, I mean, you've got this crazy imagery. But then, all of these things, as we've kind of talked over the previous weeks, that these are all anchored in Scripture, and even Scripture interpreting Scripture itself, right? Because even in the last chapter, we see the dragon is Satan, the sea beast, and you know, there's just this explanation of who these individuals, these figures are. But if there was any doubt who is being implicated in this, it's the ones that are bringing the persecution to John's disciples. It's the one that has put John on an island in exile. And so, here is wisdom, let him who has understanding calculate the number of the beast. For the number is that of a man, and his number is 666. So remember, the beast is not the number of like the imperial cult, it's actually the number of the sea beast. That is the connection to the mark. And remember the connection that this person has with that kingdom. Remember, the language kind of morphs in and of itself. Looking at Daniel 7, those were all beasts, right? And the beast represented a kingdom, an empire that was going to come about. But it's also embodied in a person. So let me read through the list of why it could be Nero. So just to kind of put that, to establish this, okay? We've talked a little bit about the Hebrew, we've talked about, you know, the presence of it in the Greek even. So there's several reasons why the identification of the number 666 with Nero is plausible. First, in an Aramaic document discovered at Wadi Marababat near Qumran, the name and title of Nero is transliterated as QSRNRWN, Neron Kaiser, derived from the Greek form of the name with the combined numerical value of 666. So even in the Aramaic, somebody was taking the Greek version of the name, transliterating it. So writing out the letters itself as the equivalent for 666. That, that's basically a smoking gun. Second, Nero was the first emperor to take action against Christians, killing many of them in the most horrible manner. Among them, Peter and Paul. It would have been natural for John to regard Nero as a manifestation of the beast that he described in Revelation 13 as one of a series of Antichrists, among them the false teachers that he mentions in his letters. Third, Nero was designated as a beast by several Greek authors. You ever heard that? It is probably not a coincidence that the numerical value of Neron Kaiser is the same as the numerical value of beast, which can be achieved if the Greek term, meaning beast, therion, is transcribed into Hebrew. John states in Revelation 13:18 that the number of the beast is also the number of a person, challenging his readers to calculate the number of the beast using a verb that suggests using the method of isopisaphism. Using the method of isopisaphism, John indicates that the numerical value of Nero's name has a meaning. The Gamatria emphasizes not only that Nero is the beast, it demonstrates that he is the beast. The numerical value of Nero's name identifies him as the one who is the fulfillment, or one of the fulfillments of the beast in Daniel's prophecy. So that is primarily from Schnabel. Mounts and Keener both tend to agree in that regard. Just the evidence is pretty overwhelming. Nero Caesar. So what is the implications for this? So even just from those three points that were pretty much landing this on Nero. Nero's the one that brought persecution. I mean, we are, he's the first emperor to do that, right? So Christianity was growing so much, it caught the attention, it was making a difference in the empire. So then, he gets persecuted. And people are forced to declare their allegiance. Because remember, Jesus is Lord, not Caesar. That was, I mean, that was a saying. And depending on how you want to interpret, even Paul's missionary journeys, he's going to all of the cities of the Roman Empire that are basically, like if you were to be born in Philippi or Thessaloniki, like you were to be, it was like being born in the city of Rome. So he was going to all of these outposts and all of these special, like Roman capitals throughout the empire and declaring Jesus is Lord. Jesus is greater than Caesar. So it's a whole different way of looking at, I was trying to think if I had that book here, but it's like Paul and the Empire. So it's really good, it's really fascinating, and you just don't look at Paul's missionary journeys the same way. As him intentionally, like, think of his missionary efforts as his way of, I don't want to say bringing the empire down, but populating the empire, like furthering the kingdom within the empire so that the kingdom could take it over. Hitting at like all the pressure points. Bold move. So now, what does this look like? What are the implications? So here's the part I want to circle back, right? Because to understand the implications of the mark, we know it's a name, it's a number, and that they had to have that mark to engage in commerce. That's the main thing here, is commerce, right? But where did we anchor this in Deuteronomy, chapter 6? So we were talking on the break, remember, this is kind of like the unholy trinity, and we have the holy trinity. So the Father, Yahweh, the Son, Jesus, in Revelation 5, who has been given authority over the earth. He's the one that is the only one that can break the seals. We have the Holy Spirit guiding and directing our lives as worship to the Lord. Right? Like, this is the idea that worship is not just singing songs. Worship is how we live. Worship is what we do with the time we have on this earth. And to drive that home, here in Deuteronomy 6, I want to read verses 1 through 8. Now this is the commandment, the statutes, and the judgments which Yahweh your God has commanded me to teach you, that you might do them in the land where you are going over to possess it, so that you and your son and your grandson might fear Yahweh your God to keep all his statutes and his commandments, which I command you all the days of your life, and that your days may be prolonged. Oh Israel, you should listen and be careful to do it, that it may be well with you, and that you may multiply greatly, just as Yahweh, the God of your fathers, has promised you in a land flowing with milk and honey. Here, oh Israel, Yahweh is our God, Yahweh is one. You shall love Yahweh your God with all your heart, and with all your soul, and with all your might. These words, which I am commanding you today, shall be on your heart. You shall teach them diligently to your sons, and you shall talk of them when you sit in your house, and when you walk by the way, and when you lie down, and when you rise up. You shall bind them as a sign on your hand, and they shall be as frontals on your forehead. You shall write them on the doorposts of your house and on your gates. Let's go back. And let's move forward just a little bit, don't get ahead of ourselves, but chapter 14. Now, not to get distracted by the 144,000, but let's move forward a little bit more, starting at verse 9. Then another angel, a third one, followed them, saying with a loud voice, if anyone receives, if anyone worships the beast in his image, and receives a mark on his forehead or on his hand, he also will drink of the wine of the wrath of God, which is mixed in full strength in the cup of his anger, and he will be tormented with fire and brimstone in the presence of the holy angels, and then in the presence of the Lamb. And the smoke of their torment goes up forever and ever. They have no rest, day and night, those who worship the beast and his image, and whoever receives the mark of his name. Here is the perseverance of the saints who keep the commandments of God and their faith in Jesus. So, an interesting connection when we're talking about on the hand and on the forehead, and we look back biblically, what does that stand for? Oh, we see that in Deuteronomy 6. And we move forward just a little bit, and you know, we can take this, like, and mind you, like some of this is kind of like, it's that both and, right? Even as we're reading this, those who worship and accept the mark, so that's kind of that physical part of it, but even within that worship, it's how they live in their allegiance to the beast. But here, in verse 12, here is the perseverance of those saints who keep the commandments of God and their faith in Jesus. There's a Deuteronomy 6 connection. If this is the unholy part of that mark, the holy part of that mark goes back to Deuteronomy 6. Does that make sense? So it's how we live our lives, how we conduct ourselves in worship to the Lord. How we live. How we conduct our commerce. Do we live with integrity? Are we out only for ourselves to get ahead, squashing everyone else? Do we give freely and take care of those? You know, the whole Matthew 25 thing. There's a kingdom system in the world. Kingdom versus empire, there you go. So when we talk about Emperor Nero being the name and number, right? This is what constitutes the mark. And they have to have that to buy or to sell. What does that look like today? Now, did this mean a prohibition on Roman coinage for Christians? Not necessarily. I mean, we definitely don't see that from early church fathers or any level of that interpretation. A lot of them were Gentile anyways, but not to throw shade or anything, but you know, Jews of that time would not use coinage that had a face on it. I think I had said a couple of weeks ago, that's what makes it interesting when, you know, Jesus asked for a drachma, and one of the Pharisees pulling out, like, whose face and likeness is on it? Like, that was a big no-no. Like, we totally missed that in our culture, you know, pull out a quarter, like, oh yeah, Washington, you know, whatever. But like, for them back then, that was a big no-no, that was a grave, they were carrying around a graven image. Like, uh-oh. So sorry, my brain's like, like, oh, wait a second. That is a graven image. So oh man, so, so yeah, what will this look like in the future? So that was the question. And that's probably what like everybody's kind of thinking like through, right? And honestly, just knowing the number of the mark of the beast, the name of the beast. Historically, this is, you know, and all the evidence behind it, is the emperor. The emperor, his name and his representative number constitutes the mark. And they had to have that mark to engage in commerce. What does that look like for us today? That's a challenge. Are we going to come to a system where we have to pledge our allegiance to the emperor? To a president? Before being able to engage in commerce? Do we have to worship them? Do we have to? What does that look like? Another way of answering it is by going to the other end, what does it look like to have our allegiance to God? How do we conduct ourselves in that way? How do we bear the mark of Yahweh? Of Jesus? On our lives, and how we conduct commerce? Do we have the mark of Jesus in our everyday life? That's what every Christian around the world should be thinking about. It should absolutely be on the forefront of our minds of how close are our ties to this world? To the current system? this world, to the current systems of authority that we are under? And do they ever compromise us or put us in a position of compromise against God? And if that makes us uncomfortable, then well, maybe we need to like slide over a little bit, you know, towards this side and loosen some of those ties. Because that's the position, you know, in frog in the pot, right? And but for eyes to be opened, it's like, oh, wait a second. But that's, this is where we are, just speaking about the United States, our Christian country. And if it is in transition, I mean, frog in the pot, right? And is the heat getting turned up or what does that look like? And you know, not to just be like a doomer and you know, all the, you know, these generations and you know, get off my lawn or anything like that, but it's something for us to think about, think critically, and wake up to and maybe even share a message for maybe some developing countries who are growing in affluence, where Christianity is accepted and be like, hey, even though all this affluence is coming to your society now, be on guard. Maybe it's the same advice to Laodicea, to Ephesus. I mean, those churches, they were going through this. John is addressing where their hearts, where their priorities are. Who were the churches that had good, only good things said to them? It was the ones under persecution and the ones that had put down some of this that had gotten into the church. So yeah, I mean, like this is something for us to really think critically of where we are in this time, in history, in society, our roles. And whether you feel like the time is short, whether you feel like the ties are too strong, now's the time to take action and maybe it's not just for you, it's for the next generation. What does that look like? I would just, that's, that's up to you, that's between you and the Holy Spirit. And really like that is the main thing is to be active in our worship of the Lord, to be in tune with what he is doing, what he is seeking to do through his people and to make that a number one priority. So, and in doing that, we can persevere and being and knowing the word of God, knowing his commandments, right? Holding to our faith in Jesus. That's why, I mean, chapter 14, verse 12 is key, it just lines it out. And know that, you know, we talked about a few weeks ago, if somebody does come along and says they're Jesus and tells you to disobey the commandments or to worship somebody else, well, you know, that's not Jesus, not the one that we're looking to, not the one that died to save us. So these things have to match up. But we need to read the word of God to know the word of God so that we're not led astray. Absolutely. As this was not necessarily written to us, but it has been retained for us, that as John is seeing this vision, he's spelling this out for the churches in Asia Minor, what is modern day Turkey. He's writing to churches that he knows, he knows what they've gone through. And in those details, we have insight in a way to protect ourselves today, to protect our allegiance, to maintain the purity of our allegiance to God. And what the, and that's why like, I mean, that, you know, we've talked a lot of, you know, what that looks like for us today here in the United States, but imagine somebody reading this in Turkmenistan, in, you know, in Saudi Arabia, in China, in North Korea. It's probably why this is outlawed there, but you know, yeah. So that's the power of the word of God in speaking within that context and understanding the context in which that is, in which it was written. just fun little, you know, like, let's just go into a what-if, but you know, if there was a certain leader that was requiring maybe worship or allegiance before engaging in commerce and maybe through Gematria, we would see that maybe the numbers would line up. Question is, what language would you use, right? Point I want to make is that knowing this connection is enough. We don't have to play the games of can we make it fit? If John was speaking of the beast as Nero and requiring his mark to engage in commerce, that's enough for us to go on, to challenge, to be challenged in how are we living our lives? But like I've said before, if there's, you know, in the same way of a system and then a person or embodiment of that, right? That would be interesting, but I'm sure we wouldn't know until after the fact. So, so we don't need to waste our times playing games on that, especially when we have a multitude of languages to go from, and this isn't even a part of our culture nowadays. It's literally only a part of our culture in the fact that verse 18 exists. And remember like, but this was a cultural thing in John's time. It didn't become so because of verse 18. It was already a thing and I really, I mean, maybe the closest thing we would have would be like Morse code. Ones and zeros maybe? In tech, right? So what would that sequence be? I don't know. So there's just so many different ways to go, like this is what you need to know. And this is why John wrote it like he did and why he received a vision like he did. So any questions, any thoughts on that? Yeah, so we can edit this part. So yeah, no, really, I mean, this is something that is incredibly serious and where we're at in history. We've seen this in other countries in the 20th century and I mean, it's not a coincidence that democracies, republics end in dictatorships. And this could happen, this could easily happen in our lifetime and I think I said a couple of weeks ago, like I don't subscribe to the R or the D, right? Red or blue, like it's, or even yellow. And so, but you know, in all of those things, it's important for us to recognize the power of history and what it tells for us. There is a very clear pattern that happens. And we are already as a people, losing our influence within this constitutional republic. There's a lot of deception there of the supposed power that we have. And not to get into capitalism versus, you know, communism or socialism or whatever else, but what we're seeing today is definitely corporatism. It's much closer to fascism, like in the reverse. That's why you would call it corporatism. Fascism's where the government is taking over industry. Industry now is taking over government. So there is a huge power struggle now and it's the popul, so it's not a coincidence that the last few presidents have been more of a populist style instead of more of a centrist. The pendulum is swinging. Where's it gonna go? There's a multitude of factors that are really leading us as a people to get more extreme in how we view things and how we view the other side. And there's Christians on every side. Where's the kingdom in all of this? That's what's being sacrificed. As we're throwing darts at each other. Something else is when you have mass tides of migration, of immigration. And anytime a majority feels like their majority status is threatened, extreme measures are taken. That led to the rise in Nazi Germany. And about seven other countries in the 20th century. We need to be cognizant of that so that there's not this great lashing out and all of a sudden a power grab and extreme measures being taken on minorities. It's a dangerous period for us as a country, as, as kingdom representatives. And we have to be cognizant of that because, because at some point, we could be guilty of voting this in. So we're worried about being on the receiving end of all of this, but what if we sleepwalk into creating this here? So that's the warning I get to leave you tonight, the thing to think about. And every time we see the news, whether you're watching the, you know, red news or the blue an opinion is being formed by that. And you're being told to hate the other side or how ridiculous they are for believing whatever they do. And you just need to vote harder. Or at least have connections to the system that counts the votes. Because who are you putting into power? And if it's all about control, that's the problem. That's actually something that Scott McKnight really drives home is that for Christians in the world, the first thing we have to give up is control. By us being followers of Christ, we recognize that we couldn't save ourselves, that it is God that saves us through Jesus Christ. And that we have pledged our allegiance, our lives, we have taken up our cross, our instrument of death, to follow Him. We've given up all control for every aspect of our lives because we're His, we've been paid for, we've been bought, paid with the blood of Christ. Our goal is not to control others, even to protect ourselves or to maintain our own level of security.
Knowing that we should sleep, they're very sound.
God is in control. So that's, there you go, there's eight minutes that you can edit out. Yep. No, absolutely. So yeah. And you know, and I am not discouraging civic engagement and things like that, but what I'm challenging is intent. Is our connections and ties to the empire. So, but we're called to further the kingdom of God and we do that by sharing good news. And that is our mission.